Okay, go ahead. Sorry, Jason.
I, um, yeah, I guess, um, also call the Systems Advisory Board meeting to order. Jason Small.
George Hooper.
Yeah, Vivek Soni, CAB member.
Yeah, our meeting is now open. Um, since you were just getting into public comment, um, my concern, I have no public comment from the advisory board.
All right. None heard. Uh, any, any liaisons to the RMLD board? Hearing none, we'll continue and public comment. Obviously, there's no, nobody in the session, so, um, we'll continue. All right, uh, motion number three, approve the board minutes, attachment one, um, suggested motion, Phil, please.
Yeah. Uh, first, I want to make a comment that the June twenty second minutes, uh, because it's the goals, those are, I only do not edit anything out of those. So hopefully all members read it and if they have comments and edits, they should present them. But I do want to make that point on the June twenty second meeting where the goals. So I'll move to the Board of Commissioners and approve the meeting minutes of June third, two thousand twenty one, and June third, two thousand twenty two. Uh, June twenty second, two thousand twenty one, being on the recommendation of General Manager.
Second.
It's a quick, quick question. Um, I don't, I don't have it. I'm sorry that I have it right in front of me. It does reflect that we have a joint meeting with the Select Board, right? Because we did, that was one change that we made from, I believe, from what was originally presented. We added a, a goal that we would have a joint meeting with the Select Board to talk about site planning and maybe other things.
The minutes in front of me right now either. Erica, do you know that, that's in there?
You did add a goal on site planning and connecting with the town on that, um, and I can send around the exact verbiage as well.
If, if you say it's in there, then that's all. I, I take your word for it. Thank you.
So hearing no objections? All those in favor?
Ms. Pacino, aye.
Mr. Stebeck, aye.
Alba, aye.
Marlene Abita, aye.
Mr. Gold, aye. All right. Okay, moving on to item number four, reporting the Northeast Public Power Association Conference. Commissioner Pacino, please.
Yeah. Erica, you want to put up the, the sheet that I sent over to you, if you would, please? Okay, so these, these are the speakers that were, um, the, the different topics that were from the other, from the conference. Uh, was held in Maine and Portland. Um, so, you know, I'm going to cover just some of them lightly. Um, you know, starting from the upper, the upper, I'll go left to right, starting from the upper left. The first one was the, uh, Mayflower Wind Energy, when really the gentleman just really spoke about the, uh, the project itself. Uh, the second one was the small nuclear reactors. Now, we did this, I thought maybe we can all get nuclear reactors in our garage.
Right, Phil?
Um, it turns out this was really, he just kind of went over the technology and this is things they talk about, um, replacing, um, you know, uh, some of the coal plants and how to use them in terms of hydro and destalinization and oil, some of the items that the, the, the technology could be used with that. Uh, the next one down is the path to the zero, net zero at this point. Um, really, you just talked about, um, you know, um, you know, how to get there at this point, the decarbonization. Uh, the carbon, talks about carbon prices, some of, some of the government policies. Uh, the, the New England changing power mix. Um, this was kind of the, the big one. Um, this was, uh, ISO New England. Um, you know, and first off, you know, the slides are up on the, uh, the NEPA website, anybody wants to look at them. Uh, but basically, he kind of painted not a very pretty picture, to be honest with you. Um, that with, um, you know, the expansion of, um, you know, um, electric, you know, electrification, that there may not be enough capacity in the system, um, going forward at this point. So he did not paint a very good, pretty, pretty picture at this point. And I recommend, you know, anybody to go out and kind of look at the, uh, you know, um, look at the web, look at the, uh, the slides that are out there at this point. At this point, so, um, you know, that's one of the big ones there. Uh, we got an update on the public policy, uh, uh, from, uh, the APP, A P P A. Uh, the lady spoke on, uh, what they're doing at this point. Uh, there was a legislative update from, uh, uh, McGuire on basically the legislation that's going on in the, uh, in the Washington DC. Um, then we talked, then the next one was using hydro, um, you know, basically a presentation. Basically, in terms of the, the one major takeaway that I took from this is that hydro is very much to be used in heavy trucking. Um, and that seems to be the message that I took away from this thing, that it's very much in heavy trucking at, at this point. So it doesn't seem to be as, as beneficial to other kinds, but it seemed to be different companies that are involved in doing this type of thing. And the, uh, the last one is again, the other big one. Meeting tomorrow is, um, electricity needs. Um, you really talked about how to get there, the different slides, the future. Uh, how to trans, how to move things forward at this point. So, and that was kind of the difference. Other than that, it's really, um, one of the great benefits, I did a lot of networking with other, uh, managers and, um, and commissioners. I don't see the fellow from, um, P, I don't know if the fellow from Peabody's in tonight, but he asked actually to be, you know, to tune into our meeting. I don't know if he's in here or not, uh, Mr. Hayes. So, uh, and then I talked to a lot of vendors at this point too. So it was a good session. Um, I enjoyed it. You know, uh, very foggy weather, I must admit, but that's a whole other story. Okay? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. In, in, uh, I, I know we know what ISO is, but, uh, you know, the, the folks that aren't familiar, the ISO New England folks, they're the, they're the backbone, you know, the tran, that's the transport side. So they're the ones that control the distribution and the, you know, pow, the, the ma, the transmission side. So it's, uh, you know, if they're, if they're scratching their head, it's, it's hard enough on the distribution side, never mind on the transmission side. So, um, that's interesting. Okay, um, moving on to the General Managers Report. Colleen, if you're ready?
No, I'm ready. I've got some things to go over. So I'm going to go over pretty quickly with everything and then maybe we can save the questions to the end, if that's okay. All right, so I'm just going to roll right through it because I know Greg's got some slides to go over. So, um, Meme announced the open and closed meetings for two thousand twenty two. Only MLP managers and commissioners are invited to the general meetings that are held that are closed. So when, um, tomorrow, uh, Erica will send you the email. Similar to my thoughts on attending the NEPA conference, I continue to encourage attendance to, to improve communications and, uh, to the, allow the MLPs, uh, to be more responsive of everything that's happening. So, um, policy, just as a reminder, policy nineteen requests that the Chair nominate board members for representation. Keeping in mind the open meeting law, if a quorum is anticipated, no deliberation is allowed. And Erica will send the excerpt from the open meeting that we just kind of had for the last webinar on members of public body attending a conference training program, pr, training program or event. So, uh, you'll get that tomorrow and then I encourage you, I go to most of them, so, um, hopefully I'll see some of you there, but you'll, you'll have to, uh, have a discussion about that. Um, the Mass EV IP EV Grant Award for Charging Stations, uh, scheduled to be installed in Reading at the corner of Haven and Main and the Public Library and in the Town of Wilmington at the Public Library and the Town Hall. The RMLD received today quotes for the charging equipment which will be awarded to Voltrak. The bid for construction has not gone out yet. Uh, the RMLD is waiting for the signed license agreements from each of those two towns for RMLD to install their EV equipment as well as the specification drawings that PLM is, engineering is helping us draw. Uh, Hamed and I are scheduled to attend the Board of Select meeting as well as the Library Trustee meeting, which is both on October twelfth, where we'll give both, um, both of those boards, uh, updates on, on that in the Town of Reading. So it's pretty exciting. Um, I will be asking you if this goes forward, if, uh, from bottom line money that the RMLD can adopt the island in front of, um, at Haven and Main. Uh, once we put our EV charging in, I would love to be able to beautify that. Um, but I would need a vote to use bottom line spending since it's not directly related. I mean, it's kind of related when I install it the first time, but after that, going forward, it's not really related to our business. So I would ask similar to at the end of the street, if, if that's something that you would consider, but I might ask for that next week as we move forward. The Town of Redding held a green communities, was part of a green communities panel discussion last night. I know a, a couple of you, uh, were there. Uh, communities, um, the RMLD presented its internal and external programs that support green communities, including programs that target minimizing lifecycle costing of buildings. Programs to support the development of the town's energy reduction plan, as well as the RMLD DOE R compliant fleet procedure that the RMLD uses along with our fleet modification assessment form, which we use for every single vehicle and truck that we re, that we replace. Um, the RMLD, uh, has sixteen non-exempt vehicles and thirty-five exempt vehicles greater than eighty-five hundred gross vehicle weight. If you're interested in seeing, I kind of showed little clips last night of our procedure, of the form of our master rolling stock, that's all been shared with the town, if anybody's interested. Can send it over, but it is, it's an operating procedure. Um, let's see, where did I land? Sorry. Uh, the RMLD can work to develop incentive programs to support fleet charging that incorporates, similar to the DPW gas pumps, a controlled and monitored system for the towns. Some subsequent questions were sent this morning to the MAPC for clarification, and those were sent from me as to whether permitting by towns for solar leases on rooftops would support one of the criteria. There's a little couple of questions last night that were a little confusing on that. Um, because solar itself generates electricity, which is not a reduction of energy. Okay, so, um, but there is one of the criteria that does talk about zoning and permitting for alternative renewable energy sites such as solar. So we're, I'm curious to see if, if our community uh, solar programs would help to support that. Um, I'd also asked whether the CEC would be moving their energy reduction goals to align with the state on electrification and carbon reduction. Um, I'll relay the answers when I hear back because that still seems to be more of an, an energy reduction. Let's see, uh, the RMLD did issue an RFI in August of two thousand twenty for the next community solar project, which included sixteen Reading rooftops for North Reading, thirteen in Wilmington and four in Linfield, the majority being municipal buildings. And while we received two limited proposals, the economics were not viable. We're going to go back out in two thousand twenty-two to see if we can get those, those numbers down, given that solar pricing has come down. While the Green Communities is a town designation, the state requires the MLP to be the billing agency to collect uh, the state CEC renewable trust charge. The majority of MLPs in the state were exempted from paying this charge due to having one investor-owned utility meter within that town. MLPs serving multiple towns can only take that same exemption if all towns have an IOU meter. And presently, the RMLD only has one such IOU meter in Wilmington. Uh, it is for this reason that the RMLD has been working for over the last year with legislation in submitted proposed redraft language that I copied you all on in June of two thousand twenty-one, that would allow MLPs serving multiple communities to, that have at least one IOU meter in its territory uh, to join individually and to be exempt from the charge referencing MGL section, uh, chapter twenty-five, section twenty, subsection A. Therefore, and in the absence of any word from legislation on that bill as of this afternoon, when I checked, uh, the Town of Reading will most likely be seeking approval, uh, or they may have already from their governing bodies and request, um, the RMLD's BOC and the CAB under the twenty-year agreement to act as a billing agency for the state Clean Energy Center and implement such renewable trust charge to all four towns, regardless of whether each town uh, seeks a green community designation. Uh, correspondence on this issue as it unfolded has been being forwarded to you by me. Uh, updates to other towns has al, also been made. My personal opinion on this is the state really wants everyone to be in green communities. The RMLD supports green communities. I have a feeling that this legislative language is going to shake loose. Um, so I'll give you any updates after I give them a call. Uh, I'll try again tomorrow and then, and then, um, again on Monday. Uh, there is some discussion about pending DOE, and that's not DOE R, right? So DOE R is state, DOE is federal. Language further addressed in climate regulations for all of New England. Um, NEPA had sent out some information from the Legislative Committee on that. Um, Greg might be able to share some more later, but we're digging into that and I'll let you know as soon as we've got some details on what's happening with that. Uh, as I mentioned to you in a recent email, the RMLD wants to ensure that all of our customers understand any and all rate changes that we're going to discuss as well as any anticipated bill changes that may come further due to things like green communities, DOE regulations. Therefore, Greg will be presenting a summarized slide at the end of his presentation that we worked on because, uh, Chair Coulter asked me to do this that works to simplify the data into a typical bill with narratives for each line and notate if the charge is not related to the RMLD. And we will utilize the red ticker tape on our website with a follow our rate discussion here, which will take the customer to the simplified slide with explanation, explanations of each item. Um, Greg and I and Joyce will work in this evening. We're going to try to get that tomorrow, uh, up on the website. The RMLD, to further enhance our communications, is stepping up its quarterly newsletter to a monthly to more effectively promote our programs. A special ed, edition newsletter will be released during National Drive Week, which is September twenty-fifth to October third, highlighting EV educational events. Staff has been working hard to align the cost of service results with the new rates, which integrate into the CY twenty-two budget. Uh, it's a bit of a chicken and an e, and an egg, like I mentioned last month. So we have some pending motion, motions this evening, as we did last month, to allow for the budget and the class rate votes for next meeting. Given the CAB has, technically has its thirty days, uh, if they want to take that in order to review. Although we anticipate such a tight and fine job, we could have back-to-back votes similar to we have in the last several years. So that's what we're hoping for. But just want to remind everybody that the CAB does have that time. The RMLD will be presenting a reconfiguration of North Reading substation, the RMLD inventory to address pallet rot and moisture issues on assets, pole yard realignment, training area and contractor staging. When I originally talked about this, we talked about moving a bulk of inventory up there. We've changed the design. It's just going to be a reconfiguration. The information was sent to the Town Manager and the DPW Director. Our next step is to contact us for courtesy, the KongKong, because we do not think it's in the buffer. Um, so, uh, just letting you know that that's happening and the Town Manager and DPW, uh, seem to be, uh, good. There's no increased traffic over there. So you'll see that on the budget presentation next month. Okay, uh, just wanted to give you an update on Greentown Labs that we went to. They had a mechanism, a, a piece of equipment, I should say, from Stash, which is a thermal energy storage heat pump. Um, we've been working with Vin Roguchi and Energy New England, where we think we might be able to get up to ninety percent grant on this. It's focused on low income, so we've selected as our first, uh, the Wilmington Housing Authority. Uh, there's forms that need to be filled out. We've had a number of Greentown Lab, uh, meetings. Uh, Hingham is probably going to participate as well as Taunton. Uh, there's a lot more information to come. We can do a little presentation, maybe squeeze it into the budget with the technology. It's, it's, um, it's, it's essentially uh, can charge up to one hour of cooling and four hours of heating. That's, it's like a battery, but it's really thermal. And it would shift during, shred the peak, uh, over so that it's discharging to limit the peak. So brand-new technology pilot program, but great news on potential, uh, grant. So I just wanted to let you know. Uh, Joyce is looking into other low-income areas that we could have some backups on, um, in case this starts to, to gain some momentum. On a lighter note, we had Electric Car Show on August fifteenth at the Wilmington Market, as well as the Reading Street Fair. RMLD was there promoting all of our programs and Shred the Peak. It was well-attended, both of them. Uh, upcoming on October third is the North Reading Town Day. Same thing will happen. RMLD will be there. I sent out an email on the National Public Power Week to you this past week. Uh, we're going to be doing it virtually. Um, unfortunately, is awful lot of kids' programs where we lift them up in bucket trucks and we're still not there yet with the COVID, so we're going to do one more year virtual. Uh, electricity-themed pumpkin decorating contest and photo scavenger hunt aimed at education and community relationship building. Uh, in addition to some team building that we'll be having internally for the RMLD employees, our service awards, our safety awards, et cetera, will happen that same week. Uh, the press release on the virtual open house went out on the seventeenth. Uh, customers can find the information as well at the bottom of our website under the news section. Uh, heat pump workshop number two, uh, because number one went so well, will also be virtual and that's tentatively scheduled for November ninth. Uh, that will again, will be a presentation followed by owner panel. EV workshop two, because the first one went so well. It will also be virtual, tentatively scheduled for February first. And just to let everybody know that the elementary art contest that we look forward to judging every year has already kicked off and all twelve schools and all four towns are participating. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, Phil.
Yeah, I just want to say I attended the Green Communities last night also. Um, very interesting, there was breaking news that we're active departments considering rebates for, uh, winter appliances. Um, breaking news on that, that front.
I didn't, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't mention it because I didn't get the, yeah, Greg's laughing. Uh, he has until the end of tomorrow to get it ready, but because he didn't get it ready yet, I didn't want to announce it. But yes, last year, we were going to do the, yeah, the outside appliances, we focused on, not on winter. Um, and we're supposed to add the winter this year, so we probably will go back a little bit in time, give people planning on buying a, um, a snow blower. So, um, so, yeah, but that's, uh, that's, uh, that, what? That's a spoiler alert. You got to give us until next week. I'm sorry.
An electric-powered snow blower. I can see the lawnmower, but, um, I haven't seen an electric-powered snow blower yet, but that's, um, that's gotta be good, right? Gotta be good. Was it like eight hundred, you know, car batteries to hold it down while it drives through? Are you, that's, that's last night.
Okay.
But it'll be there.
Yeah, uh, Greg, Bob will submit the second rebate, I'm sure of it.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, it won't, it won't be published until next Friday, just, yeah, just to manage your expectations. Thank you, Phil, for that hot-brained announcement.
We announced it last night, so, you know.
I know.
Uh, the other thing too, I want to mention is the town talked about, this is the second phase when, uh, Naresco, um, I hope I got the name right. And basically, they're, they're talking about somewhere a little bit under five million dollars, like four-point-nine million. And they basically anticipate that maybe it'd be paid for, they're going to bond it and basically pay for it over, based upon the savings, it's going to happen electricity, so. On the, on the usage, so just want to kind of put that word out too, that, you know, that, what they're proposing to do, so. All right.
Thank you, Phil. Um, okay, moving on to item number six. Greg, you're on.
All right, well, good evening, Al. Um, I'll, I'll make this professional, but not overly formal. I'm going to share screen and, um, make sure I share screen number two. Great. All right, you guys should all be able to see, uh, title page? Yes?
Yeah.
Great, okay. So obviously during the past several sessions, we've been doing a lot of discussions relative to components of rates. Um, we talked about the A three rate, you guys approved that, thank you. Last session, um, we started talking about the renewable choice. Uh, we'll talk a little about, about, about that in more details later on. Um, but this evening, um, uh, so the finance team with Wendy and the IRT team with, uh, with myself, and then with some input from the E and O team. Uh, we've been trying to coordinate what will probably be a pretty close summary in terms of what the rates would look like to support the two thousand twenty-two budget. So that's what you received yesterday. I'll walk you through a couple of key slides. Um, I wanted to have the details in the package together for you from the perspective to give you a little bit of context, so, context, so it wasn't just a bunch of numbers. But I'm going to really focus primarily on slide seven, um, from the rate perspective, and then slide fourteen from renewable choice. And then we'll talk about a power supply opportunity in, in, uh, the solar space that I'm going to seek approval on. And then one more rate change is kind of small, um, and then I'll finish off with that one charge. So I'll, I'll be fairly quick. We can pause as we go along if you want, want to ask questions. Um, but what I'm trying to do here it with the rate discussion is give you kind of a summary of where things are going to, uh, end up. So in that, in that rate discussion, you know, I always start with goals and objectives. Those are in the slides. I'll talk about those very briefly. I'm going to walk you through the rate summary or the recommendation summary, the rate summary. And then I probably, there are some different class examples in there. I'll probably take one or two of those, walk you through those and then get to renewable choice. Um, just, you know, before I go into the, the context, we're not specifically asking for a motion to approve the rates tonight. If you decide you want to do that, that's fine, but we didn't propose that because what we, as Colleen mentioned, the chicken and the egg. Typically, the budget goes first and then the rates go into fill, because remember the rates, the intention of the rates is in the upper left-hand corner, right? They're designed to cover the cost of providing service. Um, but with the work that Wendy's, uh, been doing over the past, um, well, more than, more than a month and a half in terms of collecting all the input from the groups, we have a, she has a pretty good idea of what that's going to look like. Um, it'll be finalized for the next meeting. Um, but we basically have tailored the rates to hit that cost piece. The key takeaway on this particular slide, this is what we talked about before, I'm not going to go through it in detail, but the one key contextual piece that I want you guys to understand is, um, you're going to start to see a little bit in two thousand twenty-two and then a little bit more significantly when we get to two thousand twenty-three next year, but the climate bill and the compliance for the climate bill, that's the Massachusetts bill, um, that is a primary driver of upward rendition of the transportation, the building sector from fossil fuels into electricity. So that's pushing load up. And then the second big component of the climate bill was to mandate increasing portions of the power supplying that electrification to become from non-carbon sources. And that's what we went through back in the springtime with our, uh, policy thirty Rev One stuff. So just when we go through here, the, the, the growth are fairly, uh, uh, you know, they're not, nothing's extreme in this in two thousand twenty-two, but I also want to set the stage of what's coming down the road. So if you have, we, you can interrupt me with questions, but this section and this section desired outcomes, um, not much change from, from before. I kind of mentioned the, I, the college. That the comment about generation within territory is very important. And one of the comments that Colleen mentioned earlier in her summary is that we want to do the, as much as we can to try and get generation within our territory. Solar is the, the, the one opportunity we have for now. As, uh, Commissioner Pacino mentioned, huh, nuclear backpacks and, um, hydrogen are, are probably not going to be a near-term solution for us. So solar is going to be the really primary one, and we're going to work aggressively. And you'll see more and more of this in two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three and therefore, and onward. Um, an aggressive push to put solar wherever we can in the territory. And obviously, when we did the, uh, ECC, um, adjustment last month, a portion of that was for solar rooftop pieces. So, and the reason why that's all important is, as you remember, right, about forty percent of the cost of our total, um, uh, total RMLD cost is capacity and transmission. And if we are generating within our territory, those two components don't apply. So that's part of the reason why we're trying to do what we can. Now, the reality is, you know, if we do everything we possibly can, we might be somewhere between five and ten percent, short of doing some yet-to-be-defined hydrogen, whatever, short of any of that, the solar piece of it might be five, ten percent total, just to give you guys a concept. But we still want to capture that five to ten percent. So keep in mind that the things we're doing here are basically really focused on generation within the territory. And then obviously, the electrification, and you can see that in some of the bold text, we want to really absorb as much of the electrification, as much of the load growth during non-peak hours. And as we talked about last time, EV is a great example, where that A three rate is really intended to encourage people to charge overnight and not charge over the course of the day. So our, our load curve, as opposed to being a dip at night and a peak in the afternoon, we're going to try and fill in that, that overnight peak. Um, you, in just context, this is not, you know, this is not news to you, but, you know, we really haven't had any rate increase, um, since two thousand eighteen. Um, and that one was fairly, fairly modest, right? Fairly minor. Uh, and obviously, the previous one before that was two thousand sixteen. And I want to, I want to give you the overview of this one. Now, I purposely left this slide, it's the slide number six. I purposely left, left the details, it, not the details, but the summary in here to give you guys an idea of the breadth of rates that we have. And to note that the ones on top, that we're not changing those rates. The ones in the center box are the important ones that we're changing. And I'm, if you kind of look through this, those notes on the right-hand side gave you an idea of what the key drivers were. I'll mention a few things as we get into the following slide here in just a moment. Um, probably, um, excuse me. My apologies. The key thing to take away here is that the distribution, and I say distribution, the distribution network, um, which, which, uh, um, Bob had mentioned earlier, right, that, that, we're going to have to expand that and we're going to expand it more. And I say, expand the capacity of that more. And that's where, um, with Hamed and With Hamed and the E and O group, we're staying real close to them in terms of giving a sense of what the timing of this growth is. They have been ongoing maintaining the networks and doing network upgrades. But we're starting to accelerate the growth of being able to handle additional electrification or additional load with the network. The second, the second, so that's basically making sure our internal with our territory network can handle this load change. And then the second piece with the electrification, you'll see that it's, it's fairly minor, but it's a significant, if you look at the grand scene piece. And you're going to see that in just a second, that E E C charges a noteworthy piece of a total bill, and we'll walk you through each one of those, but those are the two key components. It's not until 2023 and onward, and I'll get into that in just a second, where the power. To increase a little bit more significantly. So from 2018 to 2021. The actual power supply cost had gone down and that reduced, that basically keep a damper on any upward pressure from the rates. And in fact, was lower because the rates from 2018 were fairly low as well in terms of any increase. So it's been a fairly quiet few years. What our intention is, as you guys, is, as we put together, back with the policy thirty change, we want to avoid any rate shocks, so. Some of the things that we're working hard to do in terms of the power supply stuff is really look at long term contracts, look at a, a portfolio that is both non-carbon. But also is fairly stable and is not subject to. The, what will soon be significant upward pressure on market rates, we'll talk about that a little bit more, but anyways. My intention on this one was just to give you a general flavor of the magnitude in that center column. Of the changes anywhere from one point eight to four point nine. That two hundred percent change on the efficiency electrification charge at two ninety two right in the center. That was a change that we went from a tenth of a cent to three tenths of a cent, and that's what we did back in August. But the other ones are fairly minor and I'll walk you through the details behind it. This one, I want to just spend a few minutes on. And just to put the thing in perspective, remember that, you know, two thirds or roughly seventy percent of our total costs are power supply related. And so what this table is in the top half of this is just to give you a sense of what the power supply budget is looking like. Our budget, our M L D budget. From 2021 to 2025. And that annual delta line across the bottom, can you guys see my mouse if I move my mouse around? Yeah, maybe?
Yes.
All right, great. That's good. So that annual, this annual delta basically is the percent change from the previous year, so from 2021 to 2022. The increase is going to be really pretty darn minor, you know, less than a percent. But when 2023, 24 and 25, you can see the, the percent change, right, three percent, five percent, six percent, or it's almost seven percent. Is what, is what the power supply piece, those are costs, as you guys know, these power supply costs are pass through. Right, we, we take the cost, we work hard to, to keep those numbers as low as we possibly cast, as we can. For a whole bunch of different levers that we use, but remember, while those are going up, those are the rate increases that the customers will see over that period of time. And to the ability of us to be able to dampen that down, we will, of course. So that's one key piece, and as you can see there, right? Part of that is driven, as, as Phil had mentioned from the ISO New England report. Is there's two factors happening from the ISO New England perspective. One is the increasing load growth, and then the second thing is the retirement. And then in some cases, the early retirement of carbon based generation sources, you know, natural gas, coal, there's no more coal plants left, so it's only natural gas at this point in time and some oil during peak situations. But those factors from the climate bill are, are setting the stage for the, for these prices to start going up. And these, these are dampened because a lot of our portfolio was long term contracts, as we've talked about many times, and I'll talk about that a little bit later on. So that's just a little bit of context, but that's pass through. If you look at the bottom box here, the bottom half of the slide and says left there, 2022. This is basically a simple table to compare for a total average monthly bill. Those two blue columns, what is current, the current rates, and then what's proposed. And so we're thinking about this for 2022, we didn't change the, the load for, for this comparison. We basically just took the same loads, eight hundred and twelve K W, for example, for residential. Said, what's going to be the difference if we apply all the rate changes, and I'll give you a little more detail about that behind. But you can see. The two residential rates, right, those two go up higher, right? And then the commercial and industrial, not so much, right, three point seven to three point nine. Municipal, and the municipal is really a commercial customer in reality, but we break it out just to give. Particularly the cab an idea of what those numbers look like, and then of course, school. On all of these changes, and I'll walk them through more detail, but those are the percent changes and you get an idea of what the dollar is relative to the proposed. The delta column there is simply the proposed minus the current, so for the residential A. With all the rate changes that we're suggesting and the individual components, it'd be a hundred and nineteen dollars up to one twenty five, six dollar different. As I mentioned before. A key driver for that, I'll get to this in just a moment, but it's electrification. Basically pushing us to do a higher investment in our distribution network, our distribution network, our transformers, our lines, our poles, et cetera. So that's one key piece of it. The last piece, just to talk about here, just to wrap up this, this particular bit of context. We talked, so capacity and transmission are significant portions of our bill, right, they're roughly forty percent. And what we had talked about last month and a little bit the month before, but the shift of the peak, right? The peak from late afternoon to early evening, and when I say the peak, the regional peak, and I say the regional peak, the New England peak. As we dug deeper in, there's a lot of analysis that goes behind all this, I'm giving you the high level numbers, but there's a lot of detail behind this, there's a lot of levers to pull, a lot of things to, to make. There's a bit of art to it and there's a lot of analysis. But the conclusion that we drove is not to change the allocation of the capacity and transmission. And the particular reason not to change that, at least not this year. Is because the, the rate payers that, it would affect everybody, they. As individual rate payers are not doing things differently that are driving that peak change, that peak change is drive, it's primarily driven by. The external policy shifts and that external policy shift is the drive to put more solar in the network. So remember that we talked about last time is that the capacity and transmission peaks, the, the peak shift that affects capacity and transmission. Was primarily due to utility scale solar, so it is outside of our customers' ability to influence in, in any grand scale. And so we left those the same. Now, of course. You guys know from previous discussions over the past several years that we have a shred the peak or a peak management program. In those cases, actions that individual customers take do affect their bill directly. But in terms of changing the allocation, we decided not to do that at this time. I'm, I'm going to just, I'm going to, I'm moving fairly quickly, I know, I'm, I'm going to just give you a sample of what each one of these looks like, the tables are very similar. It's the same basic structure for each one of the major rate classes, current, proposed. Again, as you can see down at the bottom, the average monthly K W down here, that's right, if you can see my mouse, that remains the same. The current and the proposed, the only difference is in the rate change. And if you look carefully here, you'll see distribution, and this is, the structure is exactly what will appear on the bill, almost exactly in the bill, these are the major components. But this distribution, well, let me take a step back, we made some small changes to the customer charge. We didn't, we didn't do anything extreme and those really don't fully cover all of the individual costs for a customer. But there's some sensitivities and not pushing that customer tart, card, customer charge to aggressively too high. Because it's really a fixed cost for all individual customers, it, it is not variable in terms of how the customer. Can change their bill by making behavioral changes, and we really want to encourage to maintain. The ability of customers to do different behaviors in their home in terms of how they use energy. To affect their total bill, and so we truly kind of focused on making most of the charges variable and very few fixed, the customer charges fixed. But I want to take a moment and talk about the distribution energy charge. And that's this piece here, the distribution energy charge is the piece that covers the cost for the distribution network, right? And so that is where the more significant piece is, and in reality. It is a more significant piece for the residential customers because it's a broader network, remember we talked about before. The residential customers cover a larger geography, there's more infrastructure required to support them. So as you'll see, the distribution energy charge is a little bit higher as a percentage increase piece than it is for the other rate classes, and that, and that's on purpose, so that's one. And then fourth line down. Right, the E E C line, this is, this is simply what we did before, changing it from a tenth of a cent to three tenths of a cent. And that's what really drives this, but if you look at the dollar delta, it's the four oh nine and the one sixty four that really bright, that really drive is five sixty eight, which is a four point nine percent change. We left in some lines here, you know, Colleen. Had mentioned a few of these, so there are, this is where green communities would fit in if, if that, if we're required to charge for that. That's not an R M L D charge, right, we are simply an administrator if that comes through, but it would appear on a bill. We'll talk a little bit later about this other, the second one down could be our renewable choice and we'll have to. Have an input what that looks like here, particularly if it's an opt out program. And then there could be a third one or maybe a fourth one, the third one is, is right on the horizon, and that's a federal climate charge. That would get applied to us as well, and there's still details to be working on that. The point being is that when you look at a bill like this, this center section here, bring my mouse back over, there it is. Fuel adjustment, hyper credit, passing transmission, these are all pass through pieces and they represent a significant portion. These portions up here, customer charge, distribution energy and distribution demand. And the E E C, those are stuff that really fund the R M L D's infrastructure network to be able to supply our customers. And then these other ones would be external factors, and we need to keep those in mind when we talk about rate changes. Are you guys with me so far?
Yeah, Greg, yeah, you know, with, with, I'm with you, the only, the one thing that. Like the top group, so that's R M L D affecting, the middle group is external affecting, and then of course, there'll be others, right, so that's. So that's it, so.
That's, that's, that's the big piece, and you can see in reality, right, there's a, there's a significant portion that is external, right? And, and that goes back, you know what, since I have control, I might as well just go back, right? I stepped over one, two, three. Anyways, the, the point being is that this, this section here, this external fuel based stuff is all market based pricing and it is passed through. And that from the previous slide, I will go back just to think it'll be helpful for you guys to understand. That's where this green section up here that I laid out, that's the middle section of the bill, and you can see. Three, five, six, there's upward pressure on that, so when we think about making changes, so you see that, the three, the five, the six. This is fuel costs, certificates, N I P A capacity transmission. And the reason that is important is that's this section here, this section here, fuel adjustment, N I P A and cap and trans. There's going to be not in twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two, but after twenty twenty two, that's going to start going up. With factors that are, I don't say outside of our control, but those are externally driven factors. So we just, as we think about rates, we want to keep that in the back of our mind, and then as you said, the other, other, other. There should be three lines of other now, there'll be other ones, but those will also be on the bill. And from a customer's perspective, they're going to say, well, what is this, right? And just we would need to be, need to be careful because right now we're less than a five percent growth. Or five percent rate change, and again, we're just trying to support the costs that we're incurring. But as we think and we, and I'm really, realistically, I'm also just setting the stage for our opt in, opt out discussion. In terms of how we think about that, because that could be a big piece that would fit into the other category. With me so far?
Yeah, Greg, can I ask you a question?
Please.
Can you go back to that previous slide?
Yes, sir.
Just a simple question for me, when we, we're talking about the five point six and the six point, at the twenty four, twenty five, is that all just speculation on those increases or?
You mean, you mean the twenty twenty four, this five point six and six point six three?
Correct.
No, no, actually, that's a good, that's a good question, George. A good portion of our budget, of our power supply budget. Well, actually. Our fuel cost, which is our energy cost, the certificates is probably a little bit more variable, but it's still relatively small, capacity and transmission. But we know what our contracts are, like a lot of our, so. A lot of our contracts are long term, so we know what they're going to be, and they have a, they might have a two percent escalation built into them. And, and we're transitioning, remember, we, we're doing a couple of new hydro projects, so we have, and they're a little bit higher priced. So these numbers that you're seeing here are, are, I won't say they're rock solid, but they are, it might be six point six two percent or might be five, you know, six point five nine. But it's not going to be one, so those are, those are real predictable numbers because we know the contracts. Makes sense?
I also just have one question.
Please.
Yeah, so, so, so related to that, you know, if you look at natural gas prices, they've really gone up very high. And, you know, people are expecting winter is going to be really expensive, so is that going to impact? Because you, you made a budget plan, so do we have contracts that have protected us against that?
Yeah, so, so in fact, what, what we've done with the power source portfolio strategy is we leave a portion anywhere from five percent to twenty percent depending upon the season. To be open market purchases. So as we get into January and February of this year, to answer your question very specifically. I think we have, if remember numbers, we're around ten percent exposure. To, to market prices in January and February, and the bulk of those are. By two sixteen, which is basically the weekend hours where the load is lower than the weekday hours. So to answer your question. Our portfolio is fairly stable and I won't, I'll say hedged, hedged against the volatility of the natural gas prices, so. Yes. We expected the market prices to be, to go from the low to mid forties to the mid to high sixties in January and February for the reasons that you mentioned, but obviously. There's a. It'll depend heavily in terms of how cold it really gets or doesn't get. Does that help answer your question? So for us, there's not a lot of risk in terms of the volatility of the market and natural gas. The bigger issue is the removal of natural gas resources in a longer term basis from potential supply.
Because I just wanted to be clear about what would be the basis for twenty twenty one you would use going forward, because if. The numbers came up higher because of higher energy costs, then those costs may come down. But you answered my question.
Yeah, and, and you realize it's a combination of both natural gas and the mix of natural gas in the portfolio, and then the mix of. I'll say, you know, non-carbon in the portfolio as well, so it's, it's, it's both factors. And there's a, there's a lot of detail behind this, but that bottom line across this, this annual delta. Just to answer your real question, that gives you a pretty good idea of what it's like, well, that's really what's probably going to happen. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Bob, can I make a comment, please, while we're on the slide?
Yes, please, Colleen.
I just want to make sure everybody's clear that this annual delta percentage is power supply increase, not a rate increase. Okay, it, it's not talking about the customer charge, it's not talking about expenses. Or rates, it's just talking about what power supply is anticipated to go up, just want to make sure we're clear on that, thanks.
And, and that sets the stage, right, just to reinforce what Colleen said and, and Bob, your comment, right? That's going to affect these three lines here in the middle, the external stuff. So while it's predictable. It's not, it's not overly volatile. For the next, you know, through twenty thirty realistically. All right, all right, so. The key, the key takeaway here, right, is that. The distribution energy and the E E C, and those are both climate build driven charges. Are the bulk of the charge increase from a rate perspective for twenty twenty two. Now, I'm, I'm not going to walk through each one of these individually. But you can, you can get a, the same sense, right, I'll just, I'll spend just a few more minutes here. Oops, sorry, I. In the case of the commercial, and remember, the three main rate classes are residential, commercial and industrial, those are the three main in terms of the size. Remember that egg shaped spider chart that we've had a past couple of times, so just those, those are the three big ones where most of the impact is. So there's, you can see here, right, there's a change in terms of the distribution energy, five percent. There's distribution demand, okay, which also ties a little bit to the distribution network, and then there's the E E C. All said and done, when you bring all that together, in this particular case, remember. As, as Colleen just mentioned. From twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two, right, which is the current to proposed. There's really minimal changes in terms of the fuel, so all the, all of these changes. That we're talking about in terms of the percentages, the three point nine associated with commercial as example. Is primarily in charges associated with our ability to handle the increased load. Right? And then industrial, this is another example, right, these tend to be much larger customers. They have a fairly large, you can see the average monthly K W H, this is the kilowatt hours purchased. And the and the KW, and again, this is where we try and we need to, one of the things that Hamed and the E and O group do. Is they build a network to the peaks, right, to the to our network peaks. And that's what's being driven here. So as our load goes up, that whole curve is going to get shifted up as well. So that's part of the reason why you're seeing some distribution demand costs go up as well, which applies to. The industrial as well as to the commercial. There's a lot of detail here, but what I really want you guys to take away. What I really want you to think about, or just, you know, is is this table down here to give you an idea of the range and scope? Of the of the six main classes. Now technically municipal is a commercial, but I wanted to break that up for clarity. But this is, this gives you an order of magnitude in terms of what the rates that we that we are recommending. And keep in mind, while we have not yet finished the budget. Major changes, but but Wendy's pretty close to narrowing down with the budget numbers. These will support the budget numbers. So we're we're like, so. We're not going to see anything radically different from these. These are pretty darn close to what, well, these are what we're going to recommend ultimately. Makes sense so far? Okay. So I won't walk you through each of the other ones. I want to shift gears now unless you have any more questions on rates. So this is another rate question, but. But I want to make sure that in the core rates, there's no key questions.
No questions. This is all really interesting and really good stuff. Thank you.
Yeah, this is good information.
Yeah, and and yeah, and it has more questions. So those slides we just went through. We'll we'll probably tidy that down into two slides and ask for a vote on those after we do the budget vote at the next meeting. So just to set the stage. All right. Now, we left this last time. This is renewable choice, right? I haven't changed any of this from the last slide. And and where we left it, basically, there's there's two key questions, right? We we had walked away with the idea of making it an opt in. Allowing the customers, and you guys remember the structure here, I can walk through it real quick. I'll just give you a real quick highlight just to remind you where we were. But the take of the the homework assignment was for me actually to get some numbers, which I'll give you in just a second, but also. For for you as the commissioners and the cab to kind of think about this and and. And I won't say reconsider, but consider the recommendation that we're making. And if we need to make some adjustments, then great, but. We still are pretty. We think that this is, and particularly in the context of all the rate stuff that we just talked about, that an opt in program. Is appropriate at this time. Now, I'm going to walk you through real quickly what the structure is here, just just to remind you. This is a twenty twenty two example appropriately. Remember, we have that annualized line that takes the requirements for us to retire certificates. From twenty percent in twenty twenty to fifty percent in twenty thirty. And so what the commission approved and voted on was basically an annualized line to get us from twenty percent to fifty percent in that ten year period. Or three percent per year. So everyone, every rate payer will be participating at a twenty six percent level in twenty twenty two. Right? Everybody. So what we are going to offer here is an opportunity for those that want to go higher than twenty six percent. And keep in mind. That that twenty six percent increase is three percent each year. So twenty twenty three, it's going to be twenty nine percent and onward and onward till it gets to fifty percent. By twenty thirty, and that's part of our policy. And then, and we did that for good reasons. We did that to make sure that we are compliant by twenty thirty. But that we didn't create any rate shock between now and twenty thirty, but didn't want to wait and do a flat line and then at twenty thirty go from twenty percent to thirty percent. So. I I think it's great way to be stable. Yeah, go ahead.
You meant to fifty percent, but just you said thirty, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, fifty fifty percent by twenty thirty. Correct, correct. So. The scenario here was those three, you know, three choices, we can modify it, but I think your recommendation to us was try and keep it simple, have one name. Have two or three choices underneath it. And so it'd be, you know, to go to fifty percent, seventy five or a hundred, we can decide to drop one of those out if we want. But those will be incremental to the twenty six percent that they'll be paying already in twenty twenty two. And down here in the lower left hand corner, we basically ran the assumption of what it would look like. And the other thing we talked about is that this would be a fixed rate of forty cents a kilowatt hour, we would adjust it annually. But we would, we would retire mass class one certificates, starting with those and and then if we go through all those, then we'll, we'll look at the next block. By the way, the power supplies that we're adding, most of those have, many of those have mass class one certificates tied to them. So we'll have a. Bigger portfolio of mass class ones as we go forward in time, but that's a, that's an important detail, but not for this discussion. So the recommendation here was to create the program. I think we're all in agreement with doing that. The recommendation on B there was three levels under one name for clarity. I think everybody's there. There's a question because I think we basically were were almost in agreement on the opt in approach. And of course, whatever we decide, our goal is to make it effective January twenty twenty two. And as many of you have reinforced, and in fact, it came up last night. At the green communities, but be very proactive regardless of which way we do it, whether it's opt in or opt out in terms of. And the other request was Wellsley and the rest of them. So real quick numbers. Wellsley put in that they added, they added the We Care program, which was an opt out program. And it was a four percent applied to everybody. Realized that only in that worked out to be just under five dollars. There, the way their bills are set up and the loads that they have, that works out to be just under five dollars. A month increase. And they made it and the the town. Basically drove the, or highly recommended, but they drove. The Wellsley Municipal Light Department to to implement this on opt out basis. Now, the question before us was, okay, what, you know, how many have opted out? So there's roughly ten thousand customers, roughly ten thousand customers. And as of a week and a half ago, only about six hundred and thirty have opted out. So about six percent have opted out of the program. So that's one data point. The second data point for the opt in programs, you know, how how from the other MLPs. Generally speaking, most of them are right around the hundred participant range and they're, and it it's basically a. A ten to twelve thousand dollar and ten to twelve thousand meter portfolio. Of customers for those mixes. So that's roughly a one percent opt in, just to put things in perspective. That's been historical, so things might change. So. One of the things that we talked about early on back in May and June was the fact that there's much more participation with an opt out program than with an opt in program. However, one of the commitments that that we would make and to do the opt in, and particularly in the context of everything that's happened over the past several months. We'll make an aggressive communication, as Colleen mentioned to you earlier, we're moving from a quarterly to a monthly newsletter. We've got several ideas, several of that have come from you in terms of how to do more marketing communication type stuff. But we'll be aggressive and we'll, we want people to do this, but we want them to do it at a rate that they are comfortable with. So hence. Our recommendation to staff remains an opt in program. And so that's, that's it for me for the moment. We can questions, discussions, however you want to handle it. Chairman. But we will, we would like to ask for a vote and and one last small comment, my apologies. I know we've liked the renewable choice, but as we've, you know, some of the things that. That have come out of the the NEPA conference and some of the E and O conference that we were, that Hamed and the rest of the group are at. But the 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 core terminology going forward is really non carbon. And and renewable has been very important, but it's more of a historical phrase and I. I would encourage us to call this non carbon choice, but I'm not as adamant about that as. As the recommendations in the lower right hand corner. Sorry about that personal comment. All right, I'm done.
Uh, Greg, can can you clarify one thing, please? For the Wellsley, the four dollars. You know, we we're doing comparisons on fifty percent, seventy five.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're clear. The four dollars, could you please explain that? Because we don't, we're not offering anything for four dollars. So what what are they getting for four dollars?
Yeah, that's that's good. Thank you, Colleen, for the problem. The reality is that We Care program. Eighty five percent of that is targeted towards specific projects. In particular, the first fifteen percent is for a solar project that they're putting on one of their buildings and they have not allocated the other seventy percent. Only the first, only the, only fifteen percent of that four dollars is going to a program like this. So it's not really comparable. It's not really a a renewable or green or non carbon program. The We Care program that Wellsley offers. So that's a good clarification. The only difference. It it's an opt out program for doing projects. And in reality, what we will probably end up doing, because we'll come back, as I mentioned before. We will come back to the commissioners for approval to do more and more solar projects because we think they're beneficial to the rate payers. But we want to get approval for them and not really put them into an opt out program like Wellsley's doing. So we'd probably be a little bit more stringent in terms of really doing an apples to apples comparison of project based. Costs that we would pass on to the rate payers. Does that make sense? Okay.
Well, Greg, but yeah, go ahead.
Good job, Greg and Colleen. A lot of thoughts going into this, a lot of great data and. The the only, the only question I have is about your terminology, your your suggestion there that we change it. Since this is paying for mass class one recs, that is renewable power as opposed to nuclear. So I think there's an argument for staying with renewable choice. That would be my feedback. Correct me if I'm wrong. And the second only other question I have is. It says minimum one year commitment. Does that mean, so once I opt in, it stays there? I have to keep it for a year, but it doesn't sunset after a year, right? It's, you know, I only go out if I call you and say, please disconnect me from this.
You know, you know, that, so on the first point, I I think that's a good point in terms of renewable, because we're going to start with mass class ones. I think that's fair. So I'll I'll be less stringent, less passionate about the non carbon. So good. On the, on the one year commitment, we haven't figured out how to do it, but I think that raises a good point. That, you know, that they can, we have to figure out how to how to make it work logistically from our administration of the billing. But maybe we said that that, you know, there's a three month window every year where they can decide to opt out for the following year. But once they're in, they're in. So they have to opt in, but they have to let us know to get out. I haven't thought about that second piece, but I think that might be a logical way to do it.
I think this is a win win. It's an opt out for the opt in, right?
There you go. Thank, thank you, Dave. That's a great one. I.
That's perfect.
But I I think, I I think given that we're going with the opt in, so people are voluntarily doing this and they're doing it with their eyes open. So the problem that others have raised of, oh, you're, you know, you're hoodwinking people or whatever has been, you, we're not, we don't have that problem now. So I, and and that's good. So I think. With opt in, I think once they opt in, they have to stay in a year. And I think it just, you just go silent after that. If they want to. Come back at you and say, please take me off, then they also have to, they also have to do the work to do that.
I think that's, I think that's a fair way to play it. I I like that. Yeah. I and and a side note, the other thing, just. The the simplicity and clarity of the program, and again, it was with feedback from you guys as well and the work we did internally. But we also reviewed this with analog on a, on a industrial basis, right? They're our biggest clearly. And they really liked the structure and idea. Now I want to modify it a little bit. We might do a two year commitment because the numbers are a little bit bigger. But there was a, they they liked the simplicity and the ability to understand and it allowed them. To fulfill their corporate commitments as well. So what's nice about this structure? Is we can take it across late rate classes and not have it just be residential. That's a side note just for background in terms of why I think this is really good.
It's also, and then I'll get off here, but it is remarkable to me that it only costs twenty four dollars a month to go to. Renewable right now, which is kind of surprised, I would have thought it would have cost a lot more than that to get my household to a hundred percent renewable, but.
Oh, yeah. And and that's, yes, one of the things that we track very closely is the prices for, well, all the different classes, but especially mass class one. Certificates. And so we have a service that we get at least twice a week, prices, prices. Been and asked for twenty twenty one, for the, for the next four years. And so it's interesting, the volatility of the prices because they're traded. But you're right. I think for us, it's, but it's a twenty percent increase to a bill. So it's not, you're right. It depends upon the perspective. It's, it's, it's a great option. I like it. Okay, so the process, if you guys no more discussion, then it'd be a cab vote first and then a board of commissioners vote. So I'll turn it back to you, Commissioner. I mean, the chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Just just one, I I know all collected funds go to retire mass class one. And I I think you need to somehow reinforce that with this, it doesn't, that money does, doesn't go anywhere else. Other than, you know, all funds received go to this. I I don't know, I don't know how you could emphasize that. That in the, in this program, it that it doesn't go to help or do anything else, right?
Agreed. Yeah, no, this, well, this is, yeah, I, we we can, so I know that mechanically we can do it because we have a rate stabilization fund that. Is very specific focused that you guys had approved many years ago. So. I know from a mechanical perspective, that's easy. I think what you're reinforcing. Make sure with the the rate payer communication, the external communication, the marketing communication, that it's real clear and it's reinforced often. So. We'll do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, look.
Okay, so from the last meeting, I guess I was the biggest proponent of the opt in, the the opt out. So one of the things we talked. About doing some sort of hybrid. Where a portion of the the bottom tax section would be actually a an opt out. You know, and I'm, you know, so I don't want to have hit anybody with a six point five rate increase. For the, for an opt, for an opt out. I mean, I think that's, I probably have to move if if we agree on that. But one of the things I thought about is in terms of the opt in. Right now, we're, we're proposing to do another three percent each year. I was thinking maybe we do an opt out. Moving just that additional, moving ahead one year. Now, the other option could be that instead of the next year twenty six percent, we actually make it twenty nine percent. As a possibility is the other option to get to the same, to get to the same spot. On that, I don't think that would be a a big jump or or, you know. But at least it would kind of move us a little bit further down the, down the field at this point. I know there's criticism of the op, the op, the op, yeah, the opt out was the fact that. Somebody looked at the six point five percent and said, that's too much. I mean, I agree, that's too much. But you know, if we do something like just moving ahead one year, that'd be possibility. I also don't know if the department is done any. Checking on the, whether or not we could do some sort of hybrid. Where a portion be opt, opt out and a portion be opt in at this point.
Can I make a comment just to keep in mind? Some of the federal DOE legislation that might be coming may move that. So when we talked about a hybrid, we talked a little bit about, you know, the three percent ratchet every month wasn't an opt out. It's. It's mandatory. So then this would be the opt in. The DOE might be escalating the ratcheting. From a New England legislative move. That's what we're trying to focus on. So. I think this is a great program. We put a lot of effort into it. I I do want to wait to see the DOE is supposed to be signing something this week or next week. And just take the impacts. You know. Cautiously.
Good.
Greg wants to talk?
It it the, one, one option. Phil, maybe what we do is we we put this program in place and then when we. A year from now, when we're doing the twenty twenty three, maybe at that point in time, when we get a little bit of a better sense in terms of. How the opt in is working, maybe at that point we decide to shift the. Shift it forward one year so that in twenty twenty three, instead of being twenty nine percent, it'd be the thirty two percent. But I think, I think the. From an administrative perspective, I think the hybrid will be difficult to explain and equally challenging to implement. But I think the lever of potentially shifting ahead one year as an option is the simplest way to do it. But I would encourage us to wait till next year before we decide to make that shift. That's a suggestion.
Well. At at this point, Jason. I'd I'd hand it over to you because this is a cab recommendation at this point.
Mr. Chairman, just to answer Greg's comments there. I'm still like to see the op, the opt out. I don't know how Marina feels about this. This is one of her issues from the beginning. You know, but I can actually accept maybe what Greg just put forward at this point that a. at this point, that a year, we see how this works. And a year down the road, uh, we, we come back and we visit this at that point, at this point. So, okay.
I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't, Phil, I, um, at this point, I, do you want to do a, a motion on that? And, and
Well, the C A B's got to do their motion first. So, and then we can, um, I don't know if we need to do it. Yeah. Well, let the C A B do their motion first at this point. I think would be the way to do it.
You're good.
At this point, I don't want to, I don't want to overstep them if you, please.
Um, George Vivek, do you have any questions or any other comments?
I'm just wondering if this is more discussion that we need to kind of look into. Have a fore, this I was but this is also something that we could, we could vote on and move it forward to the, uh, Board of Commissioners.
I'm fine moving it forward.
Okay. Um, I'd entertain a, a motion to, uh,
I'll make that motion. Motion, the, um, move the system advisory board recommend that the Board of Commissioners vote to accept the general manager's recommendation to establish a new renewable choice rate effective on billings on or after January 1st, 2022, per the M D P U 294 rate sheet.
Second.
All right, uh, we'll call vote, George.
George Hooper, I.
Vivek Soni, I.
Jason Small, I. Motion passes three zero.
Excellent. Okay, um, Phil, I'll make the motion, and then if you want to amend the motion.
No, I'll make the motion. That's fine. Okay. Okay. Move that the Board of Commissioners on the recommendation, Citizens Advisory Board, vote to accept the general manager's recommendation to establish a new renewable choice rate effective on billings on or after January 1st, 2023, 2022, per the, uh, M D P U 294 rate sheet, and that, uh, the, this, and further that the, um, that the rate be reviewed one year before the next effective year.
Second. All those in favor?
Mr. Stenbeck, I.
Marlena Vita, I.
Talbot, I.
Mr. Scultor, I.
Phil, I didn't, I don't think we heard, heard you, Phil.
I, I'm, I said I.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Good. All right, moving down, uh, solar choice rider rate. Greg, if you could, please?
I apologize for not having a little more detail on this. This was, this is a small point. Anyways, we have in place right now a solar choice program. It is basically a community solar program. And, um, when the program was first set up roughly three years ago, there was a new, um, participant setup charge that was $60. And at this point in time, that program origination or that program setup, the whole program setup has been paid. So we really only need to charge a customer setup program at this point in time for any new customers that join the program. The program, the solar choice program has been fully subscribed for the past three years. And there's, um, basically about a dozen and a half openings due to people that have moved away that were participating. So we have an opportunity to add roughly 18 to 20 new participants into the program. But, um, just to be fair, we want to change that $60 one-time initial fee to $30 for a one-time initial fee to be part of the solar, solar choice program. So that would be a fee that would be charged once they sign up for the program, and then they, and then they go through their program on a regular basis. So this is really just changing a $60 start fee to a $30 start fee. Um, it's meant to be pretty simple. I'm sorry, I didn't write something more eloquent, but that's the bottom line. Any questions on it?
None heard, uh, Jason? Hand it over to the cab.
Jason, if there's no discussion, I'll make that motion.
I, I'm, I mean, I'm good with it. If nobody has anything else, I didn't understand the motion.
Yeah, I'm a participant in that anyways. I move the, uh, Citizens Advisory Board recommends the Board of Commissioners to vote to accept the general manager's recommendation to replace the current M D P U 278 rate with the M D P U 295 solar rate rider rate effective on billings on or before January 1st, 2022.
Second.
Jason Small, I.
George Hooper, I.
Vivek Soni, I.
Motion passes.
Phil, if I could please ask you to make the next motion.
Motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Move that the Board of Commission, the recommendation, the Citizens Advisory Board is the C P U 279 rate with M D P U 295 solar choice rider rate effective on billings on or after January 1st, 2022.
Second. All those in favor?
Mr. Sino, I.
I'm a guy.
Talbot, I.
Walter, I.
Marlena Vita, I.
All right. Everything passes. Greg, handing it back over to you.
Okay, last topic. Thank you all. Um, as you guys know, from the earlier discussions, we continue to, uh, fill the power portfolio going forward in time. And obviously with all the stuff we've talked about, um, and we've mentioned in the past, we actively, we are actively looking and continue to. But this is the first of a couple solar PV opportunities for us to participate in. Um, this one is, it's fairly early. We're going to be asking for permission to move forward for, with this to basically execute a contract. There's due diligence that has to happen on it, et cetera. But we want to execute a, a letter of intent. Um, this is a new array. It's about a hundred megawatt AC array. It'll be, uh, uh, it'll be in the Southern New England area. Uh, the location is identified. Um, but we're asked to, uh, to not share the location quite yet. Um, Desri, which is a, a company that does, we, we work on, we have supplied power from projects that they've done in the past. Um, obviously, as being solar PV, it will have, I shouldn't say obviously, it, it will have, um, it will have, uh, mass class one certificates associated with it. Obviously, we like those, um, which makes it both renewable and of course it is non-carbon. Um, there is about, um, 182,000 megawatt hours in the project. Um, we would like to take, uh, at least 27,000 megawatt hours into our portfolio. It would not be, it would not be commissioned until the end of 2024. So it's a little bit down the road, but we still want to sign up for it. Um, the pricing is that the lower portion of our portfolio. Um, as you guys know, because it has the certificates and it's, uh, it's green, it tends to have a price premium. The price premium is about 50%, 49, 50% higher than our current average portfolio. But it has the, uh, the attributes associated with it, which are the mass class one certificate. So it is actually a very well-priced opportunity. Um, and so just to also give you an idea of what it would look like. One more. Um, it wouldn't start till 2025 at this area up here. And of course, if we ended up you doing, well, since we're going to move forward with the renewable choice, these certificates up here, um, would probably be retired and move that lineup, but that's a detail for later. But anyways, just to give you an idea of when it would start and where it looks like starting 2025, we're still going to continue filling this portion in the upper right-hand corner with new contracts. But this particular one, um, we, we, we want to participate in, and we want your approval to, uh, participate in this program.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, if it's Southern New England, would it still be mass class one?
Yes, it, it's, um, it's independent of the geography location. So it's not actually in Massachusetts. Um, it's one of the bordering states. Um, which is good because it's close. Um, but yes, it will have mass class one certificate. So that's basically a registration. So it's independent of what state it happens to be in. Oh, yes, it'll be mass class one, bottom line.
Okay, it's, okay.
You can register assets that are in other geographies for the mass class one certifications. Um,
Is, is there an opportunity to, but I, I guess the question, why'd you pick that volume?
We, um, the reason why I'm picking that volume is the, um, shape of that power is afternoon. So what we're trying to do is we've got, we've got a 24-hour, you know, this, so for the rest of the, we have a 24-hour period to fill. And this basically is, um, you know, a, a noon to six in summer and, you know, a two to four at the most in the winter, or two to three in the wintertime. So uh, we, we might actually do another five or 5% maybe to make it 32 or 35. But right now, we know that this fits into the portfolio very nicely. Our current portfolio, because we look at, we look at hours as well. And, and solar is specific now. Yeah. So does that answer the question?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Greg.
But we will, we will um, solar PV programs that we will come back, they're not quite ready to present, but next meeting, we'll probably have one, maybe two more to, uh, to add to this one. We like the idea of kind of spreading a little bit of risk around too. So different geographies, in case it's cloudy or stormy in one area, it's not in the other.
Is this approved, do you know, right now?
Uh, it, uh, it is approved. Um, they're working on the interconnect study. The land's, the land's been, um, and this is just a sample. This isn't the actual, but this is one in Southern New Hampshire, but just to give you an idea. It is at 100 megawatts. This is a large-scale array. This is utility scale.
Yeah, that's, that's huge.
This is big.
Yeah. So I, it just, just, just to put some things into concept that, uh, to skip, the study alone can take 18 months just to, just to let people know how, how long, it, it, it can, it might not have to, but it, it can. Yeah. Most likely, you're going to need a, a, a brand-new feeder from something to supply this. From a lot of
Yes.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none? Uh, Jason, if I could hand it over to the cab, please?
If there's no discussion from the cab, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion. I move the Citizens Advisory Board recommended the Board of Commissioners that they vote to accept the general manager's recommendation to execute contracts with D E Shaw Renewable Investments for Energy, including associated certificates from a to-be built solar facility in Southern New England.
Vivek, you're muted.
Yeah, all right. Sorry about that. A second.
Right. Uh, Jason Small, I.
George Hooper, I.
Vivek Soni, I.
You're, you're, the motion passes. Uh, Phil, if I could please ask you?
A quick question for Greg. There's no negative publicity or anything that's involved in this that you're aware, that we're aware of? There's, I don't want to, anything, any problems?
Yeah, so, so, um, what we anticipate is we will do the due diligence that we are doing now on these renewable projects. So, um, we, we won't proceed without that due diligence completed. But right now, it is, it is large scale. There is not, to our knowledge, uh, any issues associated with clearing trees in particular. Um, it is, uh, it is on the Connecticut, Massachusetts border area. So it's close from a transmission perspective, which is another, it's a small cost-related piece. But, um, yes, we're, so none that are known of right now. Um, but we will stop if we come across any. There are other solar projects to pursue. This one happens to be, um, particularly well-priced.
All right. You ready, Mr. Chair, for the motion?
Yes, please, Phil.
Okay. Move that the Board of Commissioners on the recommendation, Citizens Advisory Board, vote to accept the general manager's recommendation to execute a contract with D E Shaw Renewable Investments for Energy, including associated certificates from a to-be-built fossil facility in Southern New England on the recommendation of the general manager also.
Second. All those in favor?
Marlena, no.
Mr. Stenbeck, I.
Mr. Scultor, I.
Passes unanimously. Okay. Onto scheduling, uh, Jason, I'll defer to you first.
Okay, um, in October, we need to have a meeting to review the budget. Think we're going to get it in the next week to review, and then we have 30 days. So, um, but here, it looks like the commissioners are potentially having a meeting on October 21st, so we probably don't want to go on that same night where we, we're doing both budgets at once, and that takes a little while. So that leaves us with, uh, if we wanted to stay on Thursdays, that leaves us with the 14th or the 28th. And probably the 14th doesn't have a whole lot of time to look at it before we, uh, meet on it. So, I mean, I, if, I'd tend to lean towards the 28th unless people have, unless, uh,
My question would be, we would need to send the budget to the board, right? So we would need to go before then. From a scheduling point of view, what's the timing that the board needs?
I think they would get it, we would, we would review in October, and they go through with their meeting in November. Is that correct, Colleen?
Um, you know, we've done it together in the past. We've done it separate. I mean, uh, I don't know about the October meeting for the board. If you were going to meet at the end of uh, October, maybe the board could move their, um, meeting to the first of November. We could have it the following week. Um,
I mean, the other option is we don't go on a Thursday and we
Right. And I don't have a problem meeting on a Wednesday either, so either one, so we're not doing a joint meeting.
Okay.
Does it, does it have to be in the, it does not have to be independent meetings. We could both meet on the same night to review the budget. Is that correct?
Or they could meet on October 20th, Wednesday, October 20th.
Yeah, we, we could do the 20th and then send it.
Give them just about 30 days, but.
Okay.
Yeah. I could do the 20th as well.
Yeah.
Your 20th works for me.
Okay, um.
Oh, I guess before we do that, then, um, we would need to have coverage for your meeting the next night. Um, I think both George, you've done, you've done the last couple, I believe, when we weren't joined, right? So I'm sure it's probably me.
That sounds good to me.
Not that I want to volunteer myself, but, uh, in essence of fairness.
Yeah, I think you should do the next few.
I think I'm a little bit here for that.
Okay. So Jason will be in, and then on Board of Commissioners meeting, if there's any objections to Thursday, the 21st from anyone?
Question, Mr. Chair, are we going to, are we going to be remote still for the foreseeable future? Or where, where, where do we stand on that at this point?
I, I, I have not seen any direction from the Reading Board of Health, um, uh, you know, saying that, you know, we, we can return. I know, I don't believe Reading Board, Board of Selectmen has returned to a live meeting. Um,
Mr. Chair, if I may, I know that Wilmington is, uh, October 1st, public buildings, people are being required to wear masks again in the, uh, in the building. So, um, I don't know how that's going to affect Reading, but, uh, I'm comfortable this way right now.
I thought, um, it was a governor's exemption, and that was, they gave an extension through September. So I guess there's, there's still a week left for them to either extend it or end it. So if they don't end it, if they end it, then they'd have to be in person, because the exemption would have expired.
I think the exemption went through to 2022, but I'm not 100% positive. I can check.
I, I think you just got, uh, voted to take care of all that.
I'm on it.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, the 20th, uh, I will be on a, a plane at that time, so I will not be able to make that meeting. The, the 20th is for the cab, John.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Thank you.
Yeah, we're, we're talking, the 21st would be the Yeah, we're, we're talking, the 21st would be the, um, board of commissioners. Okay, that'd be fine.
We can helicopter you in.
Right.
I should in, you know?
Yeah. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be mobile on that meeting, but I, I could attend that night. So.
I have no problem with that night.
Okay. Okay. So that, we'll, we'll set that as the next meeting night and at this point, um, Jason, I hand it back to adjourn the meeting, the cab.
Um, I didn't entertain a motion from the cab to adjourn our meeting.
Move that the citizens advisory board adjourn regular session.
Second.
Uh, George?
George Hooper, I.
Vivek?
Vivek Soni, I.
Jason Small, motion passes.
Uh, Phil, if I could ask you to
Move that the board of commissioners adjourn the regular session.
All those in favor?
Mr. Sino, I.
Mr. Standback, I.
Tal.
Mr. Colter, I.
Marina, Vida, I.
Excellent. All those in favor? Okay, um, no executive session tonight, correct?
What?
Is there an executive session?
There's no executive session. No.
Yeah. Okay. Excellent.
We're done.
Uh, record-breaking speed.
No, 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 you're not record-breaking. The meeting went one hour. That was it.
Excellent. Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Great, everybody.
Nice time. Everybody.